So meeting for Monday, April 11th, 2022. First up on tonight's agenda is a joint meeting with the school board. At this time, the budget presentation that the city gave at one of their last meetings has not changed. We are moving forward through each department presentations for the budget, which we will look at finalizing sometime in May. With that, open the floor to school board members and city councilors for any discussion.
Jeremy, to go through the budget memo that I believe you all have, which is the current state of our budget with a couple of variations with the changes that have been proposed up to this point, and then a version that includes the proposed furniture and renovations at the middle school. So as well as, I believe you have something related to construction as well in there. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Jeremy.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We've been here several times, talked about the budget. You've read this memo before, and I like to keep them the same and so that there's never changing landscape for you. But basically, over the last several months, we've talked about two different scenarios, the budget as presented the first time, and then option, why I'd say option B is about adding $400,000 for desks and painting. We received our health insurance rates, and that was at 8%. So last time I was here, we had had a 2% reduction. Made some, during the budget presentation, we had talked about adding some transportation software, an additional maintenance person. And then we're really hoping for good news, and I'm not sure there's anything such as good news in the health insurance rate arena. And we received an 8% increase this year on the same day that Maine Health announced that they wouldn't be taking Anthem in the future. And so that hopefully is something that is more just a negotiations between them, and I suspect that statements made nine months before a decision is more about figuring out where they want to be. But, so that didn't allow us to reduce the budget significantly from the $219,000 increase to taxpayers or 0.77%, as we had talked about with a option of painting and desks of about $400,000. I've provided for you guys what a revenue sheet for that option would look like. Tomorrow night, the school committee will be talking about these options and making a final recommendation to you guys as a board, I mean, as a city council. And I think that from based off what we've heard from feedback, that we're hopefully going to make this, try to make this commitment to the building so that we can keep taking some steps forward and, you know, I think together, supporting our schools and our staffs and our students and our community long term, this will be a very good decision for us. So really, a lot hasn't changed in a week and a half's time since we were standing here talking about the budget. And so I was hoping to spend just a little bit of time tonight, kind of giving you guys an update on the building project and where we are in the building project, because that's probably the biggest thing that the school department has facing coming up going forward. There are a lot of moving parts on those pieces, this piece, and we're aiming for our next public meeting the last week in May. And the reason that we're choosing, we've kind of pushed it back a week to the last meeting in May is that this afternoon, we just had some conversation that we expect to have vernal pool testing results back by that time, so that when we have a public meeting, we can start talking about in case there is a situation where there would be a site that would, you know, be disqualified for those types of reasons. And so we are testing four different pieces of property, Claire parcels, a piece of property on Route 5, the SMS site, and the Sweetsers site. And then the reason that we're doing four versus saying that you would go on one site is that if we had just one site, it would be a situation where if that came back as a no-go, we are waiting an entire year to make a decision about the next. So it's, I guess, kind of like applying to college and having a bunch of safeties in there to make sure that we can move towards that November election date. When we talk about programming, we certainly have some decisions that we have to make and discuss in the public. And Mike has been a representative on the programming committee. Mayor Doyle was able to attend the last one, because there are certain things, as we've talked about at the state level, that the state will pay for and some things that they won't pay for. One of the other challenges that the state has is that for new school construction, they have a debt limit, that they can only have so much debt out there at one time. And with rising construction costs and projects becoming, you know, some of them are over $100 million, certainly they're in the business of trying to help communities move things forward, build schools in a way that's effective for the community, but not necessarily solve every single problem that a community has. And so I presented you tonight with something that we've tried to, when you look at all of these complex decisions that we make, from what the grade levels to be, to where they could be on certain sites, et cetera, et cetera, it can be quite a path for one option to the next option. And so we have three different options that we discussed at the last program committee meeting, looked at and trying to estimate what types of local cost could be involved as we currently have three elementary schools that need a lot of help, and we'll need to make some decisions on how we maximize the ability to rely on new construction while at the right time, making sure that it's the right decision for us for 50 years, because this is a 50-plus-year decision that we're making for Saco. And so there are three options to talk about in different grade configurations, from having a pre-K through 1 building and a 2 through 5 building, a pre-K K building and a 1 through 5 building, or a pre-K through 2 and leaving a 3 through 5 building as is at Burns. And a lot of those different options are there for many, many different reasons, which also create some complications based off the existing site. So let me provide an example. If you are looking at option 1 and you are saying, okay, let's build a pre-K through 1 school and have a state-funded 2 through 5 school, then that decision, besides local cost and state costs that come in, then you have to look at sites. And one of the things that we know is that one of the considerations would be a rehab of something like Fairfield School, for example. However, the Fairfield School site wouldn't necessarily support 550 students. So then you would have to go and look in a different direction if you wanted to find that, which means land, existing sites, is there anything out there that you can renovate? And the options go on and on. So to keep things somewhat concise, is that we talked about these three options at our last program committee meeting. And certainly, we understand that there's what would be ideal and perfect, and then there are things that might make the most sense for us, and that there's give and take that would need to happen between all parties involved. And when they, kind of the program committee looks at a recommendation that they would make then to the full building committee, which would then make the recommendation to the school committee, they're really feeling most comfortable, I would say, I won't say best, I'll say most comfortable with option number 2. And they really like the idea of the ability to have our elementary schools at least on some sort of campus, if possible, whatever that looks like. That's when we start to make decisions and we get the DOT involved and we get more studies involved. But really, we're moving in a good direction. I feel like we've started to make some decisions. We'll have some, we'll have a good understanding by the end of May of what our land situation looks like as far as ability to build. And the meeting at the end of the May needs to be a meeting where people are prepared to come and ask questions, listen to a lot of different options, and hopefully have a big turnout so that we can start moving this forward quicker and quicker towards kind of a site acceptance by the Maine State Board, because we want to get towards that November election and time's ticking away. So I would take any questions that you have about the school piece that I could help you with now.
Superintendent Ray, thank you. So the, if you're looking at option 2, just for everyone who may or may not know, the $65 million in the middle under option 2 is because that is the state taking on an additional grade level of responsibility?
Yeah, so we've been working with the state and certainly, one of the things that is really probably not on the table at all for us is the idea that the state will just come in and pay for two schools or one really large school, just not an option. And what was, what was approved was Young School, and so you have to at least include one grade level in an option that you had built. And so when we think about option 2 on that piece, the state kind of said to us, hey, you can do option 1 or you can do option 3. However, they're concerned about option 3, and what they're always trying to do is to put the best situation for the community long term, and at the same time, they don't have a ton of interest in continuing to see schools come back up on the, on the list and reapply. And so they're willing to hopefully work with us to get the support of, this comes from the State Board of Education, to include an extra grade level in a school, which would make the schools a little bit larger than probably what our ideal would be. But if you look at a school like Thalmouth Elementary School, for example, they've got about 950 kids in that building on a campus, and we would have an opportunity to look at that school, how they program, how they, you know, release buses, they manage traffic and all of those pieces. And so option 2 may be one of those options where we say, hey, this is what we should consider as a city and take advantage of state funding with something that would also work, what we would have locally. But our challenge is we're going to have a community that you're going to, you're going to get a new building in, and we have three elementary schools that have some severe deficiencies. And how do we take an op, how do we take an approach that doesn't leave us in the same situation of doing this again and again because the next round or replacing another school, if it qualified on the state list, maybe 10 to 15 years down the road? And I'm not sure that we have 10 or 15 years' worth of weight on any of these other projects. And so we need to try to take an approach that would be, probably make the most sense educationally and financially for us as a, as a city.
And that's why they're willing to fund $65 million under option 2 rather than the $48 million under option 1 or option 3?
Correct. And again, when you look at these dollar amounts, these are estimates based off square footage. So this is nothing more than saying, it's this, it would be this amount of square footage times $400 a square foot at this stage of the game. Certainly, as a community, you may say, well, we think there could be a little bit of growth here, and we want to have this, or we really value X in our school, and we want to have a little bit bigger. So there's, I guess, similar to buying a car or your own home, you sometimes have add-ons that you are, that are important to you, and you make those decisions because a lot of their work is based off a formula.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilor Hatcher?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first time I've seen this, so I'm still trying to assess it. But when I looked at the three options, again, what the state costs, 65, obviously, what they're willing to chip in, caught my eye in a good way. When I'm looking at these options, again, we're just looking at the building, not necessarily the dynamics of the educational environment. And again, that's got to be looked at deeper. But the way I look at it is if the city chips in nothing, the option little 3, where we just let the state take care of it, we've got Burns on our hands forever, correct? Because we're not likely to get funding like this anytime soon.
Well, what would happen is you would need to reapply. Burns was in the 30th range the last time around. What is becoming more and more challenging is that because of the debt limit piece that the state has and the projects becoming so expensive, that there typically were cycles where they would get through a dozen schools, 15 schools.
We'll just take longer.
You know, this may be a situation where there are already groups out there calling for a new round of a rating cycle, and they're on school 5.
And that's my concern, because if, again, we don't bond any money, that's always a preference in some cases, but sometimes budgeting or cost-cutting can cost you later. So it's not really cost-cutting. That's why I think I'm more on option 2. And again, this is preliminary review, just got it when they, at 6:30. Option 2 allows for pretty much pre-K all the way to Saco Middle School, not including Saco Middle School, pre-K to K, we're talking sixth grades, seventh grades, because we're also going to include pre-K, will be covered. So then that just leaves the liability of, of school maintenance and all the rest is on Saco Middle School. That's a significant difference. What then I also looked at is if we do nothing, the city does not bond at zero, 48 million, we still have Burns and Middle School on our books as renovation down the road, millions of dollars, and that's just at first glance. Where if we invest the 20 million from option 3, it comes out to the 65, so it comes out to half, 50 million for easy math, plus the 5, I see that. But if we go option 2, we chip in 20, but they give us another 20 for quick math. So it's almost a dollar-for-dollar match under option 2 over the initial 48. So that's why, again, a preliminary assessment of this is option 2 seems to be the best deal for our money. However, I'm not talking about operationally what it looks like. So again, we haven't gotten into the weeds and things like that, but I am on board with option 2. Taking out 30 to 4 million bond is, when we have a 50 million bond out there coming, and we may have jetty bond out there, that one doesn't really have my appetite at the moment. But option 2, again, I think what I'm seeing is that's the best option based on what's presented at the moment. Again, I'm not taking in consideration anything else other than what I see on this page right now.
And again, this is where we are today and the thoughts that the committee is thinking. And certainly, there's so much review that has to go on from the state and acceptance by the State Board and all of those pieces. But I, you know, when you look at option 3, you would be finishing, or we wouldn't even probably have a school finished, and we would be putting our attention on the, the next piece of it. And there's, you know, a little bit of a conversation, like, we started to have a little bit of a conversation about, well, what if you built a pre-K through 3 school and then left a 4 or 5 school for Burns? The, the challenge with that piece is that you would almost essentially be saying to yourself, anything that is done at Burns ever long-term would 100% be on a local, because a 4 or 5 school at Burns, even to ease up some of the piece, would never be, would never meet the, the rating scores on overcrowding, and that's a big piece of it, or capacity. They'd say, whoa, you have plenty of capacity, even though 1/3 of the building's kind of underground. So, you know, a lot of different things to talk about still, a lot of conversation that needs to be had at the public meeting, and, you know, our hope is to do that with a very good understanding of what sites and land looks like and vernal pools, starting to hopefully have some preliminary kind of oversight review of what, some DOT recommendations, because there may, you know, there may be a site where they say, look, you just can't put a driveway there, which might just not disqualify, but say, that's just not a viable site because your sightlines aren't safe. So that's kind of all the work that's happening right now in preparation up, up until that meeting.
And option 2, just, what is the, I don't want to call it a shelf life of a building, a school, is it 50 years, is it 70 years? What is the, what do they consider, even though they're not going to fund it every 50 years or so? What is the average?
So I think they're hoping for 50 years.
Okay.
You know, when the, when they build these buildings, certainly things can happen one way or the other. Population shift, they can change, you know, sometimes they've dealt with schools that sink a little bit over time.
So the reason why I ask that is if we, option 2 allows, let's just say, we don't have to put significant attention on these buildings for 10 years, would you say that's safe?
Well, I'm, I'm not significant.
Significant attention.
Significant, yes.
Not maintenance, you still need maintenance.
I'm going to say that we need to do a better job, once we have new buildings, making sure that there is a good, healthy budget line that keeps them looking fresh and new and those pieces.
Because if our attention doesn't have to go, again, significant maintenance on the pre-K in 1 through 5, that would, in about 15 years, 10 years, allow us to start focusing on a complete rehab of Saco Middle School, potentially. Because we could start taking those maintenance costs that are going to be reduced and shift them somewhere else. As you know, Fairfield, Burns, Young, Middle School all have significant repairs needed, half a million there, 750 there. We won't need that for 15 years? Like higher cost expenses, that could then be shifted to needs elsewhere.
Well, I, to answer your question, yes, theoretically, that would happen. But in our case, we're on year number two of having a significant amount of money to address the middle school, so there's not like this huge pocket of money sitting in our elementary schools that can shift. Now, the other piece that will come with all of this, that we'll have to spend oodles and oodles of time on, is that once you have the configuration, then you have to figure out what the program and staffing need would then look like in that configuration. And I don't have a, a full picture, obviously, because that's going to take some time of looking at drawings and maps and seeing what's here and there and what. But theoretically, that could alter your financial situation, just like depending on the decisions that we make about where, let's say you chose option 2, and let's say you chose new construction for a pre-K versus a renovation. All of those pieces then need to go into the formula and calculus for transportation costs. And so there's a lot of different pieces that will come step by step along the way, because let's say that the two schools are a long ways apart from each other. Then we will get into the conversations about transportation time. Do we have enough buses? Do we have enough time to go from, with the current bus situation, making the 45-minute flip in time to get middle schoolers in? So there's all those kind of mechanical pieces that go along with this, on top of trying to anticipate what running the operational cost of a new building from utility side of things will be. While many of our, while a lot of people think about efficiencies and say, oh, there's new efficiencies, you're also in a school like this probably going to have much better air circulation, which means that motors are running more, your electrical draw could be more. So it's not uncommon for, for a school department to see a new building come, come online and then their utilities and operation costs see large swings one way or the other based off what they've constructed.
Got you. Thank you.
Any further questions from the Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Obviously, we're, we're looking at estimates here based on present value per square foot, construction costs. I'm assuming the student population that's in this grid is current student population?
So the population is used based off the 10-year enrollment study that was completed? So they, they look at those pieces. That's, you know, the other challenge that can change is that the work that happens here and on the construction side of things, if new developments are put in, obviously, we on our side, especially, you know, probably more so because we're doing this, really need to have a full understanding of what that is, what that anticipation would be. And a lot of that, Phil, is where some local options would come in to some of the play, is that if, if as a group, we were saying, okay, we expect this to happen because this project's coming online, this project's coming online, and this project's coming online, then that may be a situation where you say, okay, the state's going to give us 55 classrooms, but we feel like building a building with 60 classrooms is the best thing for us to do. And that's where some local cost pieces would come online.
So I'm assuming it would behoove the process if some of those questions can be vetted and answered to the best of our ability. We can't predict the future with any certainty, but...
Correct. And, and you know, when you look at the, the demographic studies or the enrollment studies, they tend to, they actually tend to work out pretty good for the most part until something major happens. You know, if you have a 500-home subdivision going in somewhere that's in the, in the next five years, that were just going to be three-bedroom homes, I think we could probably expect in Southern Maine that that wouldn't take that long to fill up, which would certainly have an impact. So we've got to, we've just got to be cautious and careful about those pieces and understand what's on the table and make sure that the information is well communicated to the state and our architects throughout the process.
Right. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Just to reiterate, really, some things that you said, the committee does favor option 2. And one of the pieces you mentioned but didn't highlight is, is this idea of an educational campus with both schools on the same location. And I think that also perhaps helps address some of these concerns, in that if we have large populations in some years but not others on the same campus facilitates some flexibility in programming, where classrooms could move from one building to the other with a lot more ease than if the buildings are, are far apart. The other piece that the public may be thinking about is, as you mentioned, the configuration is as of yet unknown, and that's absolutely true. And even though option 2 contains a big school, 937 students, that doesn't preclude the use of wings or floors or other construction designs that could make it feel, in fact, like separate experiences for the students. You could have one wing for the younger students and a separate wing for the older students, so that once they walk in the door, they no longer encounter each other or see each other. That can include different dining spaces, different cafeteria spaces, perhaps even different gyms, to really create separate school experiences within this school, helping, I think, mitigate some of the concerns about, about an overly large building. So just wanted to throw those additional pieces out there.
Any further questions? Any questions from the school board? Any discussion from the school board? Any thoughts? Thoughts on city council? See, any thoughts or any more questions? Superintendent Ray, in the model that was talked about for student population, did it in fact say that we are in declining enrollment and have been for quite some time?
Well, the state of Maine is in declining enrollment. And I think this year, we lost like 2,500 students statewide. Certainly, the last couple of years, it's been a little bit more, more spiky based off people who withdrew their kids and homeschooled over COVID. So that's, that's probably a little bit of an outlier. But yeah, I mean, the trend in the state of Maine has been that it's decreasing, and it's been decreasing significantly. I mean, I, when you think about, Jason, what's our high school enrollment right now? It's like 870-something? Well, we know that 10 years ago, that wasn't the case. I, I know that I don't have the, you know, the same history here, but 10 years ago at Bitterford High School, we were at like nine, you know, 900 kids, and that's not the case. It's just, we don't see the super-large families anymore. There is certainly a cost of living piece. There is certainly a cost of living piece, you know. Exactly. Housing, housing is a challenge, affordable housing is a major challenge for families that we have to look at. And, you know, I, I, yeah, I, I don't think that we're going to see, you know, this huge explosion, explosion in numbers. And, and some of the things that you can do quite easily is, you can just, you know, kind of say to yourself, like, what would happen if 200 kids added to your school district? Well, when you really think about if you got 200 kids added to your district and you're a pre-K through 12 district, you're only about a little over 10 per grade level. And so you're looking at almost like one kid per classroom teacher in your group. Now, I'm not saying that's ideal, but typically in a school department, you don't get 200 kids that move in pre-K through two. That's just not how the trends work. Now, you know, if you had a housing development coming online right now that had 200 houses in it, and they were all three bedrooms, and they were all $250,000 to $300,000, that's where you might see a bunch of younger families, you know, if they were, say, a 12,000-square-foot house, you may see that huge bubble. But that's like so easy for us to model out, because then you'd say, you take 200 kids, you put them K through five, and this would be the impact. You just don't tend to see that happen.
I don't know where you're finding a $250,000 to $300,000 house in Saco.
Well, we'd be in the dream world. And so.
School board, thank you very much for coming. Superintendent Ray, thank you very much for the presentation.
Good evening. Take care.
Feel free to stay and listen to all the budget information from all the departments that we're going to go through tonight. I, I take that to no, okay. Enjoy your evening. Let's take a five-minute recess, then we'll come back and get started.
That signed up for public comment. If there's somebody who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard.
So sorry. Hello, everyone. Thank you again. I'm in front of you again as far as talking about due process and compliance. It is a major concern I've had for four years.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you so much. Compliance, right? Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Appreciate that. For about four years, I've been talking to Planning Board and Council about due process, compliance of ordinances. Ordinances are our laws. We have to obey the laws of the city. So this is in reference to the last Tuesday night Planning Board meeting that I attended and witnessed. I remain gravely concerned, especially in light of the upcoming uncontrolled growth of hundreds upon hundreds of units coming our way. We expect more from our elected paid members and appointees of the city. Your oath is to obey the laws. Citizens should not have to constantly be the watchdog of compliance. Once again, the actions of the city are forcing the community into legal action with the city based upon the violations of the simple basics of procedural due process and the compliance of the ordinances. We have brought to your attention the TES yurts violation, the Sewell report tripping the warrant agreement failure, and the failure of the Planning Board to receive and review that report in August 2021, and the CZA, which is yours, breach of contract. We have a violation of a site plan of approval, yet there is no letter in the code enforcement files regarding the four yurts installed last summer. However, on January 14th, 2022, an electrical permit states TES is adding four yurts. They already did it six months prior. We have a breach of a TES contract zone agreement 3B stating subject to site plan review. Would you consider this as a minor site plan review, especially with the violation of land use? Was the CZA voided 10 months ago? Does the council supersede any infractions or violations made at the Planning Board level? Can the Planning Board hear new applications with violations already in place? This now brings us to last Tuesday's Planning Board meeting regarding the Ecology School. It is so reminiscent of recent past failures of our process and procedures. Our city laws, our ordinances, and state statutes are being broken, circumvented, rushed, fast-tracked, and/or violated. The lack of due process, notifications, incomplete packets, incomplete applications, a blank six-page site plan review checklist of submission requirements, missing critical reports upon which citizens insisted that the Planning Board have required documents after an eight-month wait. They received it that morning. Citizens could not review prior to the public hearing and non-compliance of procedures. Last-minute agenda addition of an amendment to a deadline with no three-week submission requirement, no notice, no PPA, Portland Press Herald public hearing notice, yet on the agenda as a public hearing. The Chair and the Board discussed after Agenda Item Two, an agreement to hear Number Three and Four due to the lateness of the hour, and that Number Five, TES, would not be heard. Some attendees left. Yet at 9:15 PM, the Board and staff agreed to start the TES public hearing. Even the applicant testified that he was just upset as a citizen in regards to due process. Administrator Kane Raff, I will be presenting another detailed synopsis with local and state citations, including the statute neglect of official duty and municipal governments are subject to any zoning ordinance to you and all concerned for legal review regarding last week's meeting. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. I'd like to echo many of Kelly's comments and concerns. I hope you were able to follow them. I'm here again talking to you about oversight. I'm here again talking about adherence to the ordinances. I'm here again to talk about contract zones. Contrary to what may some of you believe, and I know Mayor Doyle, you have stated publicly that you feel the contract zone ordinance is fine the way it is, I would like to just report here on the public record again that I respectfully disagree with that. The contract zone ordinance needs your immediate review. And I would like to ask that this item, contract zone ordinance review, be on an agenda. Citizens have been asking for this for months, and we are seeing the convergence last Tuesday night at the Planning Board level of what happens when there is lack of oversight, lack of compliance, when you have a violation on a contract zone that was brought to the city's attention last summer. You were copied on that, Council. City Planner Hamblin received that information, and yet nine months go by with absolutely no movement from the city. We are now looking at a site plan ordinance discrepancy. The Ecology School will not have the turn lane built, of course, in 21 days. This is an item that did receive city review. This applicant met with Denise Clavett for contract zone ordinance updates. The applicant met with Emily Cole Prescott, the city planner at the time, to talk about progress on the site plan, including the turn lane. The turn lane was never a forgotten item by city staff, but yet here we are, years later now, with this site plan really, in all honesty, exploding on every level. I'm weary, as a Saukco citizen, bringing forward these issues, these concerns. I know staff is very busy. I understand that there are many things happening at the city level, but this lack of oversight and compliance has reached a breaking point. Council, as you recall, you received contract zone ordinance, a workshop with the Planning Board last November 8th with Attorney Natalie Burns. She pointed out to you many issues with Saukco's contract zone ordinance. She also pointed out, and I will end my comments, she also pointed out to you that it is you, the council, in addition to city staff and the Code Office, that has oversight of contract zones, including the compliance. Last Tuesday night was a very difficult meeting. As an abutter, I was not properly notified of the second item of the turn lane. I received a notice just about the yurts being added as an amendment. That's a problem. It's a problem when our Planning Board struggles to follow the process out of a lack of training and a lack of experience. It's troubling when the city planner, who has much on his plate, struggles with the process to advise the Planning Board in a way that is clear. So I'm here to ask that you make contract zone ordinance review an agenda item. We need to have this discussion, and we need this process to improve. Either that, or we find ourselves in a very precarious situation for the city, for the residents, and for the applicants as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to the City Council, please come forward and be heard. Moving on from public comment, Item 7 is Approval of the Minutes from March 28th and April 4th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call vote on the minutes. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Brings us to the consent items. There's only one consent agenda item, and that is the approved the May meeting dates. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Roll call vote to approve the May meeting dates. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Brings us to Item 9, action items. Item A is a public hearing, final reading, authorization of funding through school revolving renovation fund program, $771,020 grant, and $756,054 bond at 0% interest, and that is assigned to Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Maine Department of Education has awarded funding of $1,527,074 to Saukco School Department for health, safety, and compliance improvements to Saukco Middle School, the exterior doors and bathroom ADA accessibility, and Governor John Fairfield School, exterior doors and indoor air quality. 50.49% of the loan is forgiven via a grant. 49.51% is repaid over 10 years at zero interest. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 at 7:23 PM. Excuse me. Yes. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who would like to address the council on Item A, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. As a teacher here in the room, I would be remiss if I didn't come to the microphone. You know, I have, over the years, toured all of the schools in various ways, under various circumstances, I guess. And I will say that Saukco Middle School has always caught my eye in the lack of any type of new furniture in that school for so long, and it's actually really quite noticeable when you tour the school. You know, our kids deserve a pleasant and positive learning environment, and those new tables and chairs, I mean, who wouldn't want new tables and chairs? But they need these things. The doorways, those safety improvements, I just, it's a wonderful opportunity to improve both of those schools. And I think the positive feedback that the community will receive over these items will be really rich and really ample. I will just say I was in the lobby of Saukco Middle School just last week waiting, and it did strike me again, the lobby of a school, I think, should be a particularly welcoming place. And I don't think it's too hard to add some minor aesthetic things to make it welcoming. If you've been in the lobby of Saukco Middle School, it's almost like entering a juvenile detention center in the front. It's really unappealing. So I'm not sure exactly if there's any of that money that can be earmarked for. These are not just feel-good aesthetics. These are welcome to the place where you're here to learn. So I'd just like to say I'm really in favor of this money, and I really am excited to see what it'll do for those two schools. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I have to also echo what other people have mentioned about this budget and the furnishings for these schools. Hate to put my son on the spot, but Marshall is going to be 40, and I do believe some of those desks and everything at that school is what I saw when he was this big. So as a citizen that I've been paying over six figures in tax-paying money in my adult life, I so wholeheartedly support this. Sorry, Marsh.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? See nobody come forward. Counselor McPhail?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Roll call vote to close. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Close the public hearing. Counselor McPhail?
The City of Saukco hereby ordains and approves the final reading of the following order in substantially the same form as presented. Order authorizing the City of Saukco to accept a school revolving renovation fund grant of up to $771,020, and to issue zero-interest bonds in an amount not to exceed $756,054, both under a $1,527,074 loan agreement with the Maine Bond Bank in providing for health, safety, and compliance renovations at Saukco Middle School and Governor John Fairfield School, and order that the item be placed on the June 14th ballot.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. That brings us to Item B of the action items, and that is budget presentations. So first up, we have information and technology. Director Panero.
Right.
Looking at page 103 in your budget books. 103 in the budget book.
All set, everybody good? Right. So first, I'd like to kind of give a overview of what the IT department manages, supports, how we're, what we're looking at for system updates, and then some sort of security posture that we have. So currently, we have approximately 222 users that we're assigning accounts to. Those 222 users use, give or take, 205 computers. Some of those come out of service. Some of them are additions from a few years ago from COVID. We still manage 80 network devices, so that's your switches, firewalls, wireless access point, door controllers, things like that. And we have about 30 servers. So kind of in the future, what we're looking at is how do we move some of those physical servers that we have on-prem out into cloud resources, either Azure, Amazon Web Services, Google Cloud. We're pretty comfortable with Microsoft Azure. What we're looking at with that is to eliminate the large costs every five to six years of replacing our server infrastructure. So we're kind of in the middle of looking at which ones can we move quickly. We've identified about half of the 30 servers that we have can go cloud resources. We've had about, right around 99.99% uptime on our servers this year. That's an excellent uptime. I wish we could get to 59s, but yeah, it's a little expensive to get up to that point. So our ticket churn this year was 1,614 tickets. It's up a little bit, but not terribly. We've started to add a little, I think we've added 10 more CIS controls. So these are the Center for Internet Security, basically your critical controls for protecting your infrastructure. There's, so they just updated it this year. I think it went from like 171 now down to like 160. So we're working towards those. The ones that we have left are expensive. They're getting a red team in here to hack us. They're setting up robust systems, high availability, and things like that. Over the last year, so I took April 1st to March 31st, these are all pretty up to date. We've had 34,786 security events that we were able to neutralize, and it's mostly things that just kind of are blocked at our firewall. But we also have a partnership with CISA, which is a Homeland Security Agency. We use a product through them that runs all of our requests for websites, and then filters those for known malicious websites, URLs. If we're reaching out to anything, those services are free for us, and I believe they are funding it next fiscal year as well. So again, another free source. Last year, I talked about this. This would cost us about $15,000 if we had to pay for this. So thank you, CISA. So some achievements. We've moved to a new remote management software. That's, it also does our patching. We're able to get to the point where we're 99% compliant with patching within 72 hours of a critical patch coming out from Microsoft. We do about 40 different patch types through there, hardware, software. So we're about 99% compliant. Still got to get to 1%. We've been able to start building automation into our help desk. So by automation, I mean, we're seeing events happen before users are telling us, and then we're able to restart services on their computer prior to them getting to submit a help desk to us. There's still a lot of things that we'd like to add, but we've gotten some of the ones that we see the most often automated. So that's the point where we're trying to move, you know, hours from my engineers working on computers to just automate them in seconds. We've fully implemented managed detection and response, as well as our vulnerability assessments. So this is through CrowdStrike Falcon Complete, which was part of our fiscal year budget request last year. That has, we've seen, I think, 19 incidents that they were able to immediately, within seven minutes, we were seeing them catch the incident as well as remediate it. So seven minutes, when it's 3:00 in the morning is great, because I wouldn't see it until about 8, 9 o'clock when I get in, and then checking through logs and seeing what's going on. So when they're able to catch things for us at 3:00 in the morning, it's fantastic. So with that, we're doing our continuous vulnerability management. So we're, our system that we used to have ran scans about once a month, or once a month to check our systems for kind of standards. This is now running an agent on our computers, and it's just always telling us when an incident is found, or when a vulnerability is found on one of our systems, or if an update hasn't happened yet, this will tell us immediately that we need to start getting patching going. So the increased security controls and remote capabilities, remote capabilities kind of dying off a little bit now. We're not seeing as many people requesting them, but we now have a pretty good system for remote capabilities. But that also comes with our security controls that we've been implementing to ensure that they're, everything's semi-safe. IT and Communications worked together this year to produce two videos. Henry Pelletier, Systems Engineer, and Andrew Dickinson worked to make a video about like basic troubleshooting, but also like password protections. And they're currently working on just overall cybersecurity awareness. The ones that we were giving out and issuing people, the information we got from them is they weren't super helpful. So we've narrowed the focus, and we have a seven-minute video of exactly what we want everyone to know. We've built an IT training room slash onboarding area. Users can come in and, makes it easy for when we're onboarding, bringing people in. We can set them up with their initial training. They can go through, they work with HR to get their paychecks set up. We go through like basics in IT, and then we're able to just send them off to their department after that. So again, so here's some of the malicious events that we saw block. 27,864 of those were known malicious websites that users were probably not going to on purpose, but, you know, incidentally, it happened. So 44 of them were command and control. So these are your botnets, your ransomware, control servers. Those were blocked before they even left our, well, they left our domain, went to Akamai, and then they blocked it for us. 1,614 support requests. So March 2020 has been our highest ticket count since August 2017. That's when we started like actually tracking monthly ticket churn, and it's also 65% higher than our average since August 2017. This is kind of an asterisk here. That number is, it's looking higher because we're trying to push people to ensure that we're getting help desk tickets to come in, instead of, you know, walking through hallways and getting stopped three to four times. We needed to account for that information. So we're actually submitting tickets and getting those, so that we have a real picture of what the IT department is doing. So that's up 2.87% from 2020 and up 16% from 2019. Meanwhile, we've been able to get our mean time to repair down to two hours. So this is the time from when someone submits a ticket to us to when it's resolved. Some of them can be much longer, but that mean time is right around two hours, and then we're 99% compliant with patching. So our budget this year, the few things that we were looking at, there's some fee increases, and that's our server infrastructure. So this gives us continuous maintenance and support, as well as security updates. This is our server infrastructure that we're adding yearly cost to, as well as the remote management software. Both of these items were purchased in 2018, and they were purchased with three-year agreements. So they're just coming onboard now with the ongoing cost, and then a part-time help desk technician. So 2023 projects and goals. We're currently in process of installing body ward cams. They're, they were there today. They'll be there tomorrow, the next day, and I believe, Jack, they're going live Wednesday? Wednesday. Those will be live and on officers. That's a server replacement. It's all kinds of wiring, new training for all the officers, and those will be ready to go. We're also doing a call recorder update next fiscal year. We're continuing to do physical network updates. This has been kind of a tough thing to get completed. We ordered new hardware for our network infrastructure back in October. We were told we're not getting it until November. So we gotta, we're gonna be adding, increasing and adding new switching gear, but it's gonna take some time. And then we have 102 computers to deploy out next fiscal year. The, an additional thing that we're looking at doing is a security information and event management software. So this is an aggregate log management system. It'll correlate events in our network and kind of give us a really good picture for when an incident happens so that we can easily identify and fix and remediate. We're evaluating changing our phone system. It's, ours isn't in terrible shape, but by the time we get through all of the departments, it'll pretty much be at end of life. We have a few pieces of hardware that are at their maximum capacity and have to be replaced shortly. shortly. So it's either, you know, we start looking at a pure VoIP system that can be used anywhere instead of just one that's an internally contained system. Again, in continuing enhancing our help desk automation, additional security controls, and then every year we look through, depending on what software we have, we're looking at either major updates. One is Munis, our ERP software, which is going through a massive change. I think we pushed it to September? Hopefully, September, massive change. You know, we're looking at CAD systems for dispatch. These are all software that have massive changes within the city and we just continue to look and improve those. So our help desk technician that we're requesting, you know, we have 102 computers that we have to deploy out next year. We're three people currently, we're up on ticket counts, we're continuously asked to add improvements for all departments and we're getting kind of stretched thin. So what we're looking at is a part-time help desk technician, roughly 20 hours a week. They'll assist us in getting 102 computers out. So those take about, from unboxing to the user using it, it's about six hours. If I, I can pull one of my guys, but it's going to be the entire, essentially the entire year. And then as a, you know, depending on the person we get, implementing or helping kind of find the SIM software that we're looking for. And that's a $25,000 request. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. City Administrator Kane Rathen, your administrative changes, that's the $25,000 note in line item one under expense. Yeah?
So you make it from that?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the halftime.
Thanks. Any questions? Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at your, the support request, the 1,614 support requests. That's about maybe four or five a day, is that right?
About around there, yeah.
And is that, that takes somebody most of a day, I guess, to sell? Is that?
No, I don't think it's a most of the day, but you know, we're also in the process of, you know, ensuring that our systems are going. There's, I mean, there are four per day, but now we're lopping off weekends because we don't get very many tickets over the weekends. It's roughly, I'd say about 10 to 12 a day.
Cool. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Counselor Gunn.
Ah, yes. Just one quick thing, the, the part-time position, is it going to be, because I mean, it looks like the assignment itself is, could be potentially finite in bringing these new systems onboard, but do you intend to keep it as sort of a, not per diem, but like maybe less, like a 25, 30-hour a week type thing? I mean, what do you, what do you envision it for like maybe once the primary assignment's over?
So, you know, this year we have 102, next year we have roughly the same amount that we're going to be replacing. Then there's a, you know, server replacements after that. They're a little less time consuming for, at least not the volume that we're doing. You know, it's helpful, right? We have holidays, vacations and things where, you know, we could go down to one or two people there for the day. You know, I'd like to keep it a continuous thing, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Director Panero.
Welcome.
Up next on page 77 will be the Communications Department. Presenter will be Director Emily Roy.
Sorry for the delay. All right, so I'm going to do the communications budget first, then we'll pause in between, then I'll move on to human resources and fringe benefits. So I asked Andrew to come out from behind the camera tonight in case there are any other questions. I'd like to make sure people know that he's here too. He's normally behind the scenes, so this is Andrew for anybody who doesn't know him. The Communications Department currently has two employees who manage all of the different communications functions from media relations, publishing the city's external and internal newsletters, managing Saco TV and the Cable Committee, website content management and the city's social media pages. Andrew and I support each municipal department and several supported entities with their communications needs. We're currently in the process of selecting a part-time employee to join our team and support the recording of the council meetings, scheduling content for the local access channel and providing additional support for communications projects. This distribution of our full-time equivalents was part of the reorganization of Human Resources and Communications to enhance service delivery. So on this slide, I just want to share some of the things that were accomplished during the last year. Since last year's budget report, we've taken 15,396 photos and covered 55 hours of city council meetings for an average of two and a half hours per meeting, in case you want to know how long you've been in meetings. That's a good number for you too. The Saco TV YouTube channel continues to grow. We have almost 782 hours of watch time on YouTube, which has increased since last year. We also manage the city of Saco government and support the Saco Police Department's social media channels. And between June 1st, 2021 and March 10th, 2022, we had a total of 711,851 social media So we also manage the city's website. We like to share a few ratings for the website each year. So we're currently at 95.3% for content quality. So while that's a good rating for us, it just shows us too, we do have, we should focus some of our energy to bring that number even higher, just reviewing content continuously. And we partner with departments to make sure they're updating their information regularly. And then our overall accessibility best practices rating is 100% for ADA compliance and that we monitor that very closely to make sure we're fully compliant so all of our community members can access information. And our community of e-newsletter subscribers remains really strong. We, we try to provide quality information each month and we have really good open rates. So you see, we're performing above industry average for the open rate and we have 3,486 subscribers in constant contact, which is what we use for our e-newsletter. A few more achievements from the last year. We partnered with the Saco Water Resource Recovery Department to inform voters about the wastewater recovery facility project bond question. So this included several off-site presentations, social media campaigns, content creation, publishing, virtual events and more outreach. We also assisted with a pop-up press conference in support of their efforts, which is always fun to do different things. So that was a first. We collaborated with finance and administration to ensure that we reached our older community members with information about the new tax assistance program and participation in the program doubled even with a very brief window of time between the ordinance enactment and the program deadline. So I think that was really effective. Andrew supported the Saco Parks and Recreation Department's new Jubilee Island music series by documenting and promoting the series. We have a photo of that. And then we assisted the city council departments, boards and committees with gathering community input for important projects such as the use of the ARPA funds. One of the benefits of the department reorganization has been working with the HR team to develop a monthly internal city newsletter, the Saco Signal. It aims to improve communication and understanding between the city departments and staff. So we've released 14 editions of the Saco Signal as of March 10th, 2022. And we also worked with HR and administration to publish an employee milestone video. We like to recognize the employees who reach those five-year milestones and it was so popular last year that we decided to do it again. We like to release that to the public too, so people can see the faces behind the services that they receive. As Ryan mentioned, Andrew and Henry created several internal training videos, which we showed all new hires and are distributed to all employees to provide that customized We'll talk about the Community Satisfaction Survey. We did delay that RFP process due to the pandemic, but the RFP is currently open and we intend to inform future budget processes and departmental planning with the results of the survey, which was a council priority and I imagine still is. And lastly, I'm excited to share that we'll be attending the National Association of Government Communicators Conference in May to receive two awards. One is for Andrew's distinguished photographer's portfolio and the second is for the collaboration with Water Resource Recovery for, we showcased James Ferguson, one of our wastewater operators, and he showed what the day in the life of an operator is like. So I'd like to say congratulations to Andrew. And then thank you to the departments who welcomed the support of communications and sharing the great work that they do with the community. I'd like to just remind everyone that we do use the cable franchise fee revenue to fund the communications budget. So we, we have used $204,377 for revenue of 292,481. So there is some money that's returned to the general fund after we fund the communications So as I mentioned before, we are working on the collecting responses for the Community Satisfaction Survey, RFP. We're still working with administration and IT to negotiate our cable franchise agreement with Charter. While this process may feel slow, we are experiencing the same delays as other communities. So that, you know, is reassuring at least. We've conducted an audit and worked with an attorney to develop a strategy moving forward and we'll be scheduling a Cable Committee meeting soon and hopefully have some status updates on that. We're happy to share that we've scheduled the installation of the playback device so we can program content on the local access channel. And as I said, this will be one of the functions of the communications coordinator position. And lastly, we're excited to continue to support our great team members and the municipal departments and supported entities as well as the different things the community wants to see. And so that is it for communications.
Thank you, Director Roy. I had to, I had to laugh a little bit when you said it was a long process. I remember being on the Cable Committee my first year on council several years ago. So it has been a long time coming. Any questions for Director Roy? Counselor Archer?
Yes, while I have you. It's a great presentation, the budget's fine. But when I was looking at the last couple of years of revenue, we went from 350, give or take, down to 295, 289, 291. And that's because of the, the fees that are included in the, in the cable bill, correct? Are we seeing this, it kind of stabilized, which is good, but there was a significant decrease. Are we seeing more, are we going to forecast more cable cutters? Forecasting more cable cutters are going to reduce that revenue.
So it looks like it's fairly stable right now. So we tried to prepare a conservative estimate just to make sure we didn't overassume. We actually have a higher rate of cable subscribers in Saco than other communities. A lot of other communities have seen a more steep decline, but it looks like if, I don't have the current revenue projections up, so I'm not sure how it's trending currently.
I'm sorry, it's muted at the moment. I'll grab you the one. Did you have the situation?
Yeah. All right, that's on. Okay. That 358 is a bit deceptive. If you were to actually go back to 2017, you would see it's closer to the 290, 295. The reason we had such a significant amount of revenue booked in 2018 is that I identified in that year that the Q1 payment needed to be properly booked as, or I apologize, the Q4 payment needed to be booked in the fiscal year to which it related. And so that actually meant pulling forward an entire quarter's worth of revenue. So more or less it came out of the, it came off of the balance sheet and was booked as revenue in that fiscal year. So that's why that's boosted so high. There was five quarters booked in 2018.
It appeared to be a significant reduction one year when it was just more of a financial, what's the word I want to say, just readjustment?
Yeah.
Administrative change?
Yeah, financial adjustment.
So we are looking stable with this amount coming in because I love that you chip into the general fund. It's always appreciated, but.
We're happy to do our part.
I just didn't want to see it dropping unless it's going into the general fund.
No, I would be very confident in the 292 that's forecasted for the coming fiscal year.
Any other questions for Director Roy or Andrew? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Andrew, I knew you had it in you for this award because when you took a photo of me at my inauguration, whatever it was, people actually said I looked good. So that's a, that's a good indicator. I, there you go. I just wanted to comment on the success, and I'm happy about the success of the senior tax program. But I, as liaison to age-friendly Saco, I want to encourage you to continue to use that as a, as sort of a launching point to more connectivity to our older population. I know that age-friendly is working very hard to equip as many folks as they can with devices that can gain access to social media. But I, I'm just hopeful that you take that as a real accomplishment, but something that we can continue to, to expand upon moving forward. Thanks.
Any further questions, discussion? Thank you very much for the presentation from Communications. We will now hear from Director Roy on human resources, page 97 in your packet.
All right, so in the HR department, we have a team of three employees supporting all of our employees with their human resources needs. In this picture here of the team, you'll see Carolyn Civic, she's our benefit specialist. She's the one standing up. Casey Shanahan is seated, she's the HR generalist. And then I'm the director for that department as well. I cannot say enough positive things about Casey and Carolyn. They've been very well received by employees. The comments we get is that customer service has been enhanced incredibly. So I'm very proud of all of my team members, but they're doing a really great job considering they started in November, which also is open enrollment. So they hit the ground running. So at least we know they made it through that, so I think they're here to stay. So for some of the HR accomplishments, I'd like to, I already shared the additions of the employee newsletter. We also brought back an ergonomic assessment program. So these had been, these hadn't happened for a few years, but we think it's really important in terms of addressing that modification rate you've heard about for workers' comp and trying to identify preventable injuries, making sure people's workstations are configured in the most ergonomic way is really important. And 10 may not seem like a lot, but each assessment typically results in corrections that either IT or facilities have to make or we need to buy different equipment in order to retrofit that space. And we already have five more that are scheduled in April. With our employee handbook rollout, we've also been working on compliance. So we've done 55 license checks to dates for, license checks to date for employees who are driving city vehicles. This is in the vehicle use policy. Well, it's been in the policy for a while, compliance hasn't always been a focus. And we also have to run our CDL holders through the clearinghouse. So we're partially through that project, working with different departments to make sure we identify any employee who's driving a city vehicle and do the annual license check to make sure they can still safely operate one of our vehicles. Then we offered four new voluntary benefits during open enrollment this year. So we offered life, accident, critical illness and hospitalization. These are offered through UNOM currently and this was as a result of feedback from employees about our benefit offerings and relationships with other providers. employees about our benefit offerings and relationships with other providers. And this also allowed us to negotiate a more favorable rate for our short-term and long-term disability coverage during that renewal process. And it was a lot to launch with two new team members, but it actually helped us determine some billing errors for our other benefits that I'll speak to in a moment. So as of April 5th, 2022, we have 189 full-time employees. We welcomed 55 new hires, including seasonals, from July 1st, 2021 through April 5th, 2022. And of these 55, 31 were full-time employees. We've created a new onboarding process and tried to clarify our benefit offerings with some educational materials. We also processed 26 separations during that same time period. So each of these... Each process is pretty lengthy, which it's really great that we have two additional people in the office who are helping with each step of the employee lifecycle. We've also implemented a new tracking mechanism for retirement separations and leaves of absence. So the count of 21 here includes short-term and long-term disability, FMLA, and parental leave. So I'd like to acknowledge the work that Carolyn has put into enhancing these processes, including the opening the line of communication with more of our employees to make sure they feel supported during their life event illness or other qualifying family situation, but also the focus on tracking so we can better report in the future utilization and monitor some of those trends that we're seeing. Then we have over 200 benefit corrections related to billing that's resulted in approximately $5,000 in monthly cost savings for the city. The most significant correction was related to dental billing, ensuring employees were paying the proper premiums for the coverage they received. And this is a result of our extensive audit of our benefit billing process. So I'd like to recognize Casey's attention to detail and tenacity in reconciling these bills. It's a lot to do that. And then she did a really great job working with employees to ensure that they didn't lose any coverage, that they have the proper coverage moving forward, and they understand any corrections that were made. And then 20 staff members across five departments reached five-year milestones last year. Combined, these staff members represent 235 years of service to the city of Saco, and their talent, dedication, and depth of knowledge are really critical to keeping our organization running smoothly. So this is, again, another benefit of our teams working so closely together to communicate some of this information. So in addition to the accomplishments I just shared on the last slide, we rolled out the employee handbook and implemented the wage and compensation program. These are both huge undertakings and have helped with compliance, pay equity, and yielded some focus areas for our audit. We've enhanced a significant number of HR processes as a result of our current practices audit as well. And we've also started visiting departments to conduct onsite training. We recently went to Public Works with the IT department and look forward to more department visits and outreach in the coming year. We found this to be really effective, seeing employees in their environment. And we've also focused on supervisory training and have three different tracks for supervisors that we're currently deploying to make sure the supervisors know what their role is and ensure there's smooth management in the city. And I bring up the newsletter and video a lot, so I'll skip over that. And I already mentioned the enhanced customer service. I'm just very pleased that the feedback's been really positive for the changes that we've made. I'm eager to keep up this momentum. We partnered with city departments to develop safety subcommittees this year and provide additional training for the importance of injury reporting and a strong return-to-work program. We work very closely with MMA on this. And then lastly, I discussed the time-consuming benefit billing reconciliation, but has yielded strong results. You'll see here that we were able to keep the human resources operating budget fairly flat. We've requested additional funding that I'll describe in a later slide that you'll see under the city administrator's budget. In the year ahead, we are shifting our focus to focusing on recruiting, interviewing, and assessments, as well as continuing to approve our onboarding processes. Another focus area will be identifying ways to retain our high-performing and dedicated employees, where a strong retention program is something we need to focus on. We are working through the additional paychecks module setup to improve our tracking and reporting capabilities, but we had to delay the implementation of these to make sure the data we're putting in was clean. So we will be focusing on that this year instead of... I was hoping to have had it done last year. And we've undertaken a thorough audit of our retirement plan structures with a specialized attorney. So we're working through an action plan once we receive the results of this analysis and plan on doing annual retirement plan audits moving forward so that we don't have to do the volume of cleanup that we've had to do at this time. And then we will also be working closely with the city administrator in development of performance management methodologies, different professional development opportunities, and then succession planning in partnership with department heads as well. So Amelia Meyer is our wellness coordinator. She is also a Parks and Recreation employee. She does a tremendous job with our wellness program. She's been really excited to have a stronger partnership with human resources to find other ways to create more targeted wellness topics and get people engaged with different programs. So we've been meeting quarterly to talk about the different goals and then brainstorm new ideas for programs. We've included some more targeted surveys in recent employee newsletters to find out different ways that employees want to be engaged with wellness. And Amelia brought back the well-loved Lunch and Learns for employees, so we're happy that we were able to hold one of those recently. And lastly, you'll see in the budget for wellness, we budgeted ergonomic assessments there. So you'll see that in, I think it's section six of the budget book. And so fringe benefits is something else that we work on managing. We worked with GLNAS to prepare the budget for this year. So the fringe benefit line accounts for backgrounds of medical testing, the retirement plans, our short-term and long-term disability coverage, health insurance, dental and optical, tuition reimbursement, the workers' compensation, and unemployment funds, and then recruitment expenses. So you'll see unemployment utilization increase due to a new allocation of those benefits and better budgeting for these costs. You'll see an increase in that line. And for workers' compensation, we are properly budgeting for utilization for the remainder of our work, and this category won't be realized for three years. So while we have worked really hard on this, those claims stay on the books for three years. And this is why the work with ergonomics and our Safety Committee on Prevention Strategies and Return to Work Plans are so important. And you'll see here, so the... These are the budget increases that were included in the city administrator's budget. We... I've required all three of the HR team members to have their certification through the Society for Human Resource Management. So I've requested the funds to cover the membership fees for all three of us to maintain those. And additionally, we've requested funding for our contracted services line for workplace investigations and labor negotiations using a third party, since the current budget doesn't have any funding in this line. And then under fringe, there were a few new things in the handbook, so parental leave and vacation buyout. So you'll see those budgeted there. For main pirs, there's an increase. There was a result of the labor negotiations. We offered a new dispatch plan. And then there's a change in employer contributions that we needed to account for, and those are set by main pirs. We increased the medical testing to reflect our current spending, because we are trending over budget in these categories. And as I mentioned before, when we did the short-term, long-term disability renewal, and we increased the short-term disability coverage to $1,000 of coverage per week and adjusted the formula for this to properly account for the rates, we were able to negotiate a lower renewal rate by offering the voluntary benefits. And that is it for HR and fringe benefits.
Thank you, Director Roy. Any questions for Director Roy? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. You answered one question I had, was the impact of all of these safety culture improvements and ergonomic improvements on our workers' comp rate. So if we've got a three-year window of wait, I just want to suggest publicly that, you know, sometimes when you're waiting for the benefit, you can't seem to justify the cost. So in the next two years, I don't want us to think for a minute that we need to cut back on those efforts that you're making now to gain benefit down the road away. So I commend you on that. Just curious as to what topics you bring to the Lunch and Learn. It's kind of a... The only reason I ask is that it... Sometimes for the employees to reach out into the community and bring in outside professionals. For example, bringing in somebody to talk about some topic regarding personal finance. Those sometimes can sort of enhance the employment situation. So I'm just curious as to what topics you've thought about.
That's a great suggestion. So Amelia's done a great job at engaging the local community for nutrition. We worked with an elemental wellness provider. Both of them are located downtown in Saco. We have heard feedback that employees would like workshops about developing living wills and some like financial guidance. We also have that through Main Municipal as part of the EAP program. So there's different things available to employees anytime if they just want to reach out to EAP directly as well. That's the Employee Assistance Program. But I appreciate that feedback, and we certainly look to expand those offerings beyond just the nutritional wellness and, you know, getting outside, but just finding other ways to make sure employees have what they need to be successful. So thank you.
Any further questions for Director Roy on Human Resources? Seeing no further questions, we're moving on to fringe benefits?
I covered it in one slide.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we will hear from Chief Clements from the Police Department. It's a good thing Communications was right there.
The computer would cooperate.
I just want everybody to note, I haven't touched it.
You can blame me.
Thank you very much, Mayor Doyle, members of the City Council, City Administrator Kane Rathen, for those watching at home. Again, my name's Jack Clements, and I'm your police chief.
Somebody saw you and they said, "Freeze."
I hit every button you told me to. You told me every button I hit it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, here we go. Just keep clicking buttons. I'm not IT, so it's my solution.
Let's just start off, first of all, with some highlights quickly. Patrol Division, last year, we conducted 6,143 traffic stops, investigated 904 traffic collisions. We responded on 233 mental health calls. Prior, we had not been keeping track of this, but as part of a program with NAMI-Maine, they wanted us to start keeping track so that they could work with the legislature on some solutions. So these calls do not include calls where there's another, like a primary offense. So if there's a runaway or an assault, that takes priority. These are strictly just mental health calls we handled. So if you include people that were in crisis for other things, we're probably closer to 400. People driving impaired, 108. And then the Police Department fleet, 313,650 miles driven. On the support side, we've got 10 dispatchers. They took in 26,000 calls for service. We have two dispatch consoles and currently working on building out a third console. Our Criminal Investigation Division, they handle more long-term investigations, but they helped patrol on 151 cases. Some of these, you might remember, were on the news where the federal government got involved and people got some significant time. Those cases do take quite a bit of time for the entire team to work through. And then on our civilian support side, Animal Control, our ACO handled 1,362 calls, and Parking Enforcement issued 438 tickets. So then I'll talk real quickly about some trends that we're starting to see. So if you look at the first quarter of '21 versus the first quarter of '22, our calls for service were up 26.5%. The next statistic is one that is a little bit bothersome to me. If you look at the first quarter of '22 versus first quarter of '21 for impairment arrests, we're up 71.4%. And then if you look at our traffic collisions, 2020 versus 2021, almost a 31% increase in those. So normally, the Police Department is something that people look at and say that we're always doing enforcement and that when people see us, it's not a good day. But we really do pride ourselves on community engagement. One of the things that we did work on, we continue to every year as a Pink Patch project. This is something that we take part in to raise money for the SMHC Breast Care Center. In January of last year, we gave them a check for $2,065, and we're going to be doing another check, I believe, this week. National Night Out was something that, due to the pandemic, we had to skip. Fortunately, August of '21, we were actually able to hold it. We saw about 2,000 people from the community come to the event. A lot of people there, obviously a number of you were there. And it wasn't just the Police Department. This was the entire city, Fire Department, you name it. Everybody was there. So I look at this as a great event. This is something where the people in our community can come out, and if they have a question about any city service, it's there. Budget numbers, I don't want to, you know, kind of talk about what the Finance Department has talked about, but we look at every year maintenance of effort. So that is last year's budget plus any contracted increases. The one new addition is Respond or Connect Live. This program is something that's new. It is... Gives people in the community the ability to text into dispatch. What's really interesting about this program is it can convert 200 languages. So obviously, as people move into our community or move into the state of Maine, if English isn't their primary language, they can text in. It converts it to English, and then when we respond, it converts it back. So everybody's becoming more savvy with texting rather than phone calling. So this is something that gives us the ability to communicate with them. That was the one new thing that we asked, and again, that's $2,676. Finally, if you look at our budget, fiscal year '22 versus fiscal year '23, '22 is on the left. You'll see that compared to '23, like base pay normally is a bigger piece of the budget. That's starting to shrink, and I think the reason for that is everything is getting more expensive. I've talked to some of you folks about this before, but just as an example, the police cars that we normally purchase, we're being told when we go out to bid to expect a 20% increase in the cost of cars. When we order ammunition for our qualifications, they're filling orders from April of last year. So and this is all, I'm sure, something that everybody in the community sees. And on top of that, then when you go to order things, the menu is much shorter than it used to be. So we have to really be careful on what we're ordering and what we're asking for, because the choices just aren't out there anymore. That's all that I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions for Chief Clements? Counselor Berman? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. I think last time we spoke, you mentioned that your patrols are running really minimally staffed. You have the minimum number of officers on each shift. Is that still the case?
It is.
And does that need to change in the future? Are we looking at an increase in personnel?
So I don't want to come back to you folks and ask for staffing when we're not at full staff. I would prefer to come back when we're at full staff, see what that looks like, and then come back and discuss that with you. We are down some positions right now. We continue to get applicants. I will say that the Communications Department has done an amazing job doing outreach. We have reached out to some places we haven't in the past, and we do continue to get some good applicants, and then we have to work through that process.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Just looking for a little clarification. I could be reading this wrong, but you said that the Responder Connect Live is $2,676, correct?
Yes, sir.
Where is that found in the budget? Because I see a line that's an administrator's change for $250,2,676. Just, is that under the computer software line?
It should be tucked into computer software somewhere because it's a software-based program.
Yeah, I think that's pretty significant.
I can provide some additional clarification. So there are two software increases for the Police Department. The first is Responder Live Connect, which Chief Clements just mentioned. The other is $250,000 in starter funding for an upgrade to the Dispatch, Dispatch Records Management System. My understanding from having several conversations with the chief as well as our AT Director is that our current records management system is built on server infrastructure that is likely to be obsolete within the next couple of years. We need to move to a SQL database-driven records management system, which is likely to be significantly expensive. And my understanding is you are working on a regional solution.
We are. So we're looking at, we are working with some other police departments. So a lot of agencies in Maine are split between two different records management and CAD software. The State Police and some Sheriff's Department use one, and then there's a lot of agencies that use IMC, which is the program that we have. That program is from the early 90s, so it's...
It's impressive it still works.
It does, but we've been told that when we've gone to meetings with the company, we've been told that it should be here for 10 more years unless there's a technology cliff. And there are so many changes coming up with security on the system. CGIS is asking for increased changes, so I don't really have a high level of comfort that 10 years is a good number. I'd rather get in front of this and start planning, and there's some other police departments regionally that are there with us. So we've given ourselves three years to try to work through and come up with a solution.
Sounds good. I just, the numbers were so close, I wasn't sure if they just had fallen off, but I won't, I'm not questioning it. If needed, it's needed. Thank you.
Any further questions? Chief, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Up next is Parks and Recreation, page 106 in your budget book, and we'll hear from
It should be coming up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and residents. Thank you for allowing me the time to present to you the Parks and Recreation fiscal year 2023 budget accomplishments and goals. The Parks and Recreation Department oversees 673 acres of land, and we currently maintain over 155 acres of that. The Parks Department continues to work hard on ensuring the health of our trees by pruning them and if needed, removing them for the safety of our residents. As you can see by the numbers of 765, we have done, we have pruned this year as well as planted and removed. In 2021, we have been recognized for the 12th consecutive year of Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. During the beginning months of 2021, we were still in the height of the pandemic, in which we served over 5,200 meals to our seniors. We currently send out every two months 654 seniority newsletters that has a general calendar for all of our programs and activities for participants of ages 50 and older. It spotlights our bus trips and our luncheon learns. It has a page dedicated to the age-friendly of Saco that highlights what they are offering and the resources they have. Some community announcements as well of our seasonal announcements. We currently have over 18,000 members in our system, of which almost 60% of all Saco residents are in our system. During a very up and down year in 2021, because of the pandemic, we still took in over 11,000 registrations for roughly 100 programs that the department offers. 2021 was a transition year for us, for the department. In the beginning of 2021, our programs were small to ensure the safety of all our participants. By the time we got to summer camp, we allowed roughly 50% of participants, which is why we only had 377 campus for the summer of 2021. The fall programs was back to roughly 75% enrollment, which includes 300 kids for our after-the-bell programs as well as our soccer programs and all our fall sports. This summer, we will be back to 100%. We will see over 600 kids in our summer camp and theater programs. Now, after-the-bell program will be back around 400 participants for next year. All of our other youth programs will be back to running at 100%, which we are extremely excited to develop. I cannot say enough about the staff at Parks and Recreation. They're an extremely hard-working, dedicated group, and I'm extremely proud of the team for the job that we have been asked of them and continue to be asked of them. To come to work and provide some type of normalcy for the kids, the adults, and the seniors in our programs during the pandemic has been truly amazing. We kept our doors open, the programs running, while continuing to provide to our community the excellent programs they expect of us. Some of our major accomplishments was bringing back some of the things that we all took for granted. Our theater program, our special events, our field trips for our seniors in our summer camps. We started the concert in Jubilee Park with the help of the, some of the volunteers, nonprofits, like the Ped and Bicycle Group, the Arts Commission, Saco Main Street, and our very own Parks and Recreation Advisory Group who were there. We had more piping plovers nests on the beaches, on Saco beaches than ever before, and to be honest with you, we already have two piping plovers on the beach today. So I would like to point out that all dogs must be leased starting April 1st. Amelia Meyer received the Dr. Bill Eckert Young Professional Award from the Maine Principal of Parks and Recreation Association. Some other highlights are the middle school ski programs teamed up with the travel organization to have a senior group take a trip to Arizona and see the Grand Canyon. Continue and expanded our gardening program at the community center while continuing to grow our senior programs. Our department continues to expand our outreach to other city departments like the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Communication Department, to have them come and be a part of our summer programs and after-the-bell programs. You can see with this slide, the data continues to show the growth of the Parks and Recreation Department and the need and want of the programs that we offer. In the downtime for recreation apartments, because of the pandemic, our department still saw an increase of over 3,500 new members as well as an increase of almost 1,500 new households. We had over 650 new registrations, which is down slightly from our average of 1,000 because of the reduction of numbers of participants in our program, but that number should rebound this year as we come back to full capacity and increase our new programs. Our budget is up slightly, 5.3%. What I classify as our operating budget is anything outside of base pay. So besides the nuts and bolts, what we actually truly spend is up slightly, but that's because of the cost of increased material, oil, gas, electricity, and contractor services. In the five years I've been here, we have worked hard to control our budget, and this year is no different. As you can see, our base pay is roughly 75%. Programs is everything from special events, officials, program clothing, and our field trips for seniors and participants of our summer camps and after-the-bell program. Supplies are office supplies, cleaning supplies, program supplies, which reclassifies anything that we can use within one year. Equipment is anything that we can use for more than a year or beyond. Planning for tomorrow. The Parks and Recreation Department continues to locate areas in our department which we can improve. Over the last couple of years, we have enhanced all of our neighborhood parks, which includes Ryan Farm, Boothby Park, Shagerty Woods, and Hillview Tot Lot. We have enhanced our Riverwalk Trail at our Front Street Park as well as paved and putting restrooms at the Foster Road Athletic Complex. Our plans are to continue to plan for tomorrow, and here are the next group of projects. These projects, with the hope of your approval of the Arbor Fund, will come to reality. 12 School Street, which was purchased in September of 2019, will be the home of the much-needed teen center. But our vision is that facility will also be used as a multi-generational facility, which will be used during the hours of school hours as a senior space and then used as a teen center and after-school programs. Prentice Park, which is located on Route 5 just before the Saco River on the right-hand side, will be, will have access to the river as a non-motorized canoe and kayak boat launch. Our plans to have a dock in a small parking lot with a couple of benches and picnic tables for the people to enjoy the Saco River. Diamond Riverside Park is currently undergoing a major transformation of its own. The park, once completed, will have a new playground for two- to five-year-olds as well as a five-to-12-year-old playground and swing sets. The walking path is already in, uh-oh, I think my computer just died. It's a problem with technology here. I'll finish it off. The new dock system and boat launch will be in later this spring. Benches, picnic tables, and a large green space for all to come and enjoy while viewing the beauty of the Saco River will be finished later this year. Cascade Falls, this beautiful waterfall and trail system has slowly been going through a rebirth of its own with the increase of visitors to the Diamond, to the Diamond and the Rough Trail system. We hope to finish our last upgrade, which included Bridge Over Cascade Stream and benches and picnic tables for all to enjoy one of the most amazing little waterfalls in southern Maine. Our department, with collaboration with our advisory board, will be launching a Stewart of Saco Parks project this year, which will incorporate volunteers to support our ongoing parks and cleanup projects during the several months. I thank you for your time, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Sommer. Any questions? Director Sommer, on page 108, just under fees. So I see there's a 968.8% increase in fees or a change of $15,500 over the previous year. What are the fees for?
So I can answer that question. If you look a couple lines down, other has gone down by $15,500. That amount represents the fees that we pay to our credit card authorizers so that we can accept credit card payments. So rather than paying that out of a miscellaneous account, we've created a dedicated credit card fees account so we can better keep track of our expenses related to that.
Thank you. Thank you. And then also, I did get a question from a constituent on Diamond Side Park. Is there an ability to put some lighting down there to help keep folks from being down there and doing inappropriate things?
Correct. So we have talked, I have talked to Ed Profano. I think what we'll do is two or three locations along the trail system, and we will end up putting up solar lights along the way. So I think we'll have at least three or four. Again, all our parks are dusted on, so we still strongly encourage it. And one thing, once you put lights out there, it encourages people to go there during the evening hours. But if you've gone down there, you'll see the park is very much wide open. The visibility in that park is unbelievable now. We have seen less issues in that park since we've done the work that we've done. And the hope is the more people we bring down there, the park will continue to see the rebirth, and then eventually, the second phase of the park is to create a trail system on the other side of the railroad tracks using the cattle crossing that's underneath the railroad tracks, which will be the second phase a couple of years down the road.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Sommer? Counsel Archer?
Not really a question, but a comment. Glad to see that you broke the million in revenue again. We won't worry about last year, we just disregard that and the year before, but I'm glad to see, three years ago, we broke the million mark and that was a significant milestone. So I'm glad to see post, well, not post-COVID, but back to 100% operations that we broke a million, and we probably could have done a little bit more because we didn't really go 100% until, we'll say, September, give or take.
Actually, we're not even, so our after-the-bell program's only running about 75% to 80%. Again, keeping the numbers low, we're going to be close to $1 million this year, and the $1,046 that we've projected in revenue next year, I'm pretty certain that we're going to hit it.
Because with this revenue, I mean, it's Parks and Rec, so it covers two, but you pretty much are able to cover half your budget, more than half your budget in both, not both departments, but both focuses.
Recreation comes close to covering their own budget line. But Parks will never make money. We don't ever want to make money on Parks, but the recreation side, with the revenue, is pretty darn close.
Which is great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Director Sommer, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I apologize for my computer going dying out.
It's technology. It's okay. Up next, we will hear from Finance Supported Entities, excuse me, Supported Entities, Contingency, Insurance, Solicitors, Revenue, and Fee Schedule, page 85 in your budget book, and we will hear from Finance Director Solis. I will try not to interrupt your budget presentation with a loud noise, and I apologize to Director Sommer for my interruption when I made a noise into the microphone with my budget book. Apologies.
They're pretty, they're pretty large. I'm surprised it doesn't happen more often, to be honest. Okay, Finance Department. I did want to thank Andrew for the beautiful photographs that illustrate all of the presentations that we're enjoying through this process as well as the budget book. The budget book is just a little bit dry, less dry than it was when I first started here, thanks to Andrew's beautiful work. So let's talk a little bit about the Finance Department in action. These numbers are taken from the latest 12 months to give you an idea of what a full year in the life of the Finance Department looks like. On the accounts payable side, we processed 3,634 P-card transactions and reviewed and paid $10,330 invoices. Customer service, we issued 9,228 bills and processed 46,697 receipts. And the First Floor Group has done a great job through the pandemic. They were on the front lines, interacting with our citizens, and I think they've done a wonderful job. On the payroll side, so payroll was brought into the Finance Department a little over a year ago now, two years ago? Wow, time goes really fast. We process $19.5 million in pay and benefits through our payroll system, and if you look at sort of the cost, benefits, and pay, benefits, and software, that's an efficiency that's an efficiency of 0.67% on your cost, which, if you're in the finance industry, is, is an excellent metric. We, on the financial management side, did issue 626 pages of reporting and earned two awards for reporting excellence from the National Government Finance Officers Association, one for the excellence in budget reporting, and one for excellence in our annual financial report. This was something I had worked towards in the last couple of years, getting our budget book submitted for that award. And we did issue $108,567 in tax assistance through the new Senior Tax Rebate Program this year. What were our achievements? It felt like it had only been three months since I was last before you, and I did the math, and it has been 12 months. It's been, there's been a lot of change in the Finance Department. We did work closely with Human Resources to implement the new employee handbook. There were 42 policy changes required for that new employee handbook, and we facilitated that over a two-month period. The Finance Department has continued to sustain services through multiple leaves and turnover. Government is not immune to what people are calling the Great Resignation, and we've been challenged to maintain services. All of the individual departments have done a great job writing down SOPs, keeping great documentation so that we can continue to support both our citizens and our internal customers in other departments. We did work to draft and implement the new Senior Tax Rebate Program in partnership with age-friendly Saco Communications Department. And we have been trained for and stood up tracking for the $2.1 million in ARPA funds that the city was awarded from the federal government. What are some goals for the coming year? We are looking to put out an investment RFP to improve interest earnings. If you look back a couple of years ago, we used to get $300,000, $350,000 on our unassigned fund balance, and in the last year, it's only been $22,000. So we are hoping to purchase investment services to improve our earnings. We want to expand use of P-card and virtual card payments with our partners at JP Morgan Chase, get a little bit more of rebate funding, again, to offset tax revenue on the bottom line. We did issue an RFP for collections agency earlier this month, and we have a goal of collecting $30,000 on non-current accounts in the coming year. As part of the comprehensive plan, there's a big focus on financial stability, and especially looking at our investment and capital planning. I'm working with Director Fox to stand the capital planning committee back up and improve oversight over our existing portfolio so that we can ascertain sustainable funding levels and make smarter choices about where we invest in new capital assets. We also want to look at merchant services and banking services in the coming year to make sure that we're getting the best possible value for our taxpayers in terms of fees and how we're facilitating virtual payments. Virtual payments, we stood up several different ways of paying for things online over the last couple of years. Each of those comes with their own merchant services account, and so we want to streamline those processes a little bit. Here's a breakdown of the budget. As with many departments, base pay, our most significant investment is in our people assets. Base pay does comprise most of the budget in fiscal year 2022. Fees, this is primarily paychecks, our payroll software, and munis, our ERP. Those are up 11% in fiscal year 2023, contracted increases. The supplies line, that's mostly printing and postage for our tax bills and contracts. That's basically all our auditing services. The city is audited annually. There was a small approved increase in the Finance Department budget. This is for American Payroll Association training with a net cost of the general fund of $3,000. The American Payroll Association is the nation's premier training association for payroll compliance. Membership and annual training are necessary to remain up to date and changing IRS guidelines and ensure that our payroll is meeting all standards. We started, I enrolled as a member this year, and I have found tremendous benefit from that enrollment in identifying improvements to our payroll processing. And again, if you think about $19.5 million expended annually, I think $3,000 is a reasonable investment to ensure we're managing and tracking those funds correctly. Before I move on, are there any questions regarding the Finance Department budget?
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm just curious, you mentioned in one of your slides a $30,000 non-collectible account. I was also going to ask about the status of the ambulance billing, which we had to deal with a while back. And I recall there was a fairly sizable charge-off that I was a little concerned about. So I was just wondering if you could update me on that whole process? Has it improved, and where are we with it?
Certainly. So in terms of ambulance billing, I am keeping a keen eye on our aging receivables. I've partnered very closely with QMC on tracking those data points and requesting status updates on how we're going back, especially to our commercial payers. Certainly, we have limited tools when it comes to self-pay or patient-pay amounts, but with our commercial payers, we should be getting every dollar we charge. So I am working very closely with that team, and they have all eyes on our account to ensure that we're staying up to date. When it comes to self-pay, patient-pay, we made a couple of tweaks in the last couple of months in terms of what the bills look like when patients receive them, to try and get the open rates a little bit stronger. And of course, the next piece is collections, because unfortunately, especially in a, in a world where we've got energy costs going up and we have housing costs going up, sometimes medical bills become a lower-tier priority. And while we certainly don't want to put any of our patients in a position of economic difficulty, we do want to set up payment plans or have some kind of arrangement. So we are collecting on those balances. I believe that a key piece of the puzzle in getting some more activity on those self-pay and patient-pay accounts is to have a collections agency in hand, if for no other reason than to provide a level of enforcement that we don't currently have on bringing those accounts back in line. So I would say our first task is, of course, to select a collections agency. And then I have already spoken with the tax, our tax collector, Denise Pendleton, who also sort of manages all of our receivable balances. Her and the team are ready to do our own sort of internal mailing blast prior to moving these collection, these accounts over to collections, because we do want to make sure that, you know, the city of Saco, in my signature, is the last communication for a patient before they're moved off onto a stronger enforcement action. Is there another question? Yes, so the $30,000, it's a bit of a throw-a-dart-at-the-wall. I don't have an exact number for that for collections. We also, in addition to the ambulance bill pay accounts, we also have some personal property accounts that go back pretty far. Again, it's difficult to enforce on that. Collections agencies, because they report to the credit bureaus, provide sort of a next level of, of interaction where we can maybe get people to communicate with us and get them on a payment plan.
It sounds like you have a much improved process. So that's, that's really the best answer to my question, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Any further questions for Director Solis? Director Solis, the only question I have is finances, excuse me, finance expenses funded from ARPA. There's $25,000 in the base pay category line for, from ARPA. What is that?
Yes. So as part of the budget process, we did identify a lot of pressure on the tax base for coming from personnel costs. And under the ARPA funds, the city of Saco is authorized to fund administrative costs. The Finance Department is doing a lot of the lift in terms of reporting and compliance related to ARPA. So we moved $25,000 over to ARPA for year one and year two to offset personnel costs within the Finance Department.
But because it's only for ARPA, it's not going to be long-term built-in?
It won't be long-term, nope. So it was sort of a decision made in this budgeting cycle, and it'll be something that, you know, would, would be unwound at the end of the, of the funding.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, moving on.
All right. Other budgeting units. So we do have contingency, $347,500 budgeted. Contingency is comprised of tax abatements, miscellaneous fees, bank fees, and the Senior Tax Rebate Program. So tax abatements actually came down $50,000. This was offset by an increase on the Senior Tax Rebate Program, more or less, which we did fund at $150,000, which would be a full 100% match to the Property Tax Fairness Credit amount that was reported to us by Main State Revenue Services. That ensures we can do a 100% match. Annually, bank fees were held flat. And then miscellaneous expense, it's sort of the overall contingency to use for unanticipated expenses. And also, there's some funding there for shared initiatives with effort on an annual basis. Insurance, this is a chart kind of showing our insurance costs over the last couple of years. In fiscal year 2020, the Finance Department did reassess the allocation of school versus city premiums based on feedback from our partners at Pacquinn and Carroll. And then, more or less, the maintenance of effort and city administrator's budget holds insurance flat versus the prior year. We did have a 10% forecast increase per broker. The addition of the Deputy Finance Director has allowed us to go to market, which is going to save us $20,000 in the line year over year. So that's a nice benefit to the city. And we've also worked with Main Municipal Association, which has a governmental insurance product. So we're giving them a shot at the business as well, and we're going to see what the best deal is for our residents. The city solicitor, we have $157,286 budgeted for fiscal year 2023. We didn't receive any notification of fee increases, so the maintenance of effort budget is held flat versus fiscal year 2022. Going back a couple of years, you'll see there's a big dip in fiscal year 2019. That was the year where the Economic Development Department did a massive TIF development agreement revision. And so a lot of the solicitor costs in that year were actually TIF-qualified and moved to applicable TIF districts. In fiscal year 2022, we did, we took a look at the budget. The solicitor budget is on track year-to-date now that TIF-qualified solicitor expenses were reclassed. And so we felt confident in budgeting a flat amount for the coming fiscal year. A little bit about grants and reimbursements. In the budget book, there is $0 budgeted, both for the grant expense and revenue side. We don't have any funds budgeted because it is difficult or impossible to predict exactly what the city might be awarded in fiscal year 2023. However, any awarded grants, the revenue would offset the expense, so there wouldn't be an impact to the unassigned fund balance in budgeting only $0 amounts for this coming fiscal year. We do report grants, revenue, and expenses in grant-specific accounts for compliance with reporting requirements. Grants that happen to roll through more than one fiscal year, so in order to avoid having grant revenue fall to the unassigned fund balance, we may report those in a special revenue fund rather than the general fund. So for fiscal year 2023, for example, the ARPA funds have been budgeted in a special revenue account because, of course, we have a three-year window to expend those funds, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't want those to report down into the unassigned fund balance at the close of the year. Fiscal year 2022 did have $48,197 in grant-funded expenses to date. Another great benefit, I think, of tracking grants the way that we are currently is that we can see all the hard work that our departments do in getting grant revenue and finding reimbursable programs through the state or federal government. A little bit about supported entities. Of course, we did receive, we are going to have a presentation from the Dyer Library. I believe that's coming the last Monday in April. And we also had presentations from Saco Main Street and BSOOB. We're continuing to work with BSOOB to identify what of their funding amount can be funded by TIFs versus what will need to be funded by the general fund. The Dyer Library has a 5.5% increase to support COLA for its employees. And again, Executive Director Leslie Rounds will be presenting more on that budget in two weeks. There were a couple small increases for Caring Unlimited, Eastern Trail, and Seeds of Hope in the city administrator's budget. And then there were a couple new supported entities. We had $3,000 for Saco Bay Trails and $1,000 for Vet2Vet. And for all of those smaller supported entities that don't have the opportunity to present before you, they have drafted really thoughtful funding request letters that are in your budget book. I encourage you to read through those if you haven't had a chance to do so already.
Counsel Archer? Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for disclosure, I'm going to do it now. If there's any amendments to Vet2Vet, I will not be voting. I am the treasurer of that organization. The outreach was done by our Executive Director, Sue Gold. I was not part of any of this, but I just wanted to put it out there that if there's any amendments, obviously, I'm voting on the whole budget, but any amendments to that one line item, I will have to recuse.
Thank you. Please continue.
Are there any questions on other budgeting units?
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Just a question about the solicitor line. Is that just Attorney Murphy, or is that all of our legal expenses?
That is all of our legal expenses. So we, Solicitor Murphy is at the city solicitor, specializes really in local ordinance and applicable state regulations. And then we do use specialized firms for things like debt issuance and for personnel matters.
Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I just wanted to go public again with a comment I made after the Saco Main Street presentation about the possibilities of, of funding paid positions within the, the city infrastructure. We heard, we continue to hear about the Great Resignation and the difficulties that they're having as an example of recruiting talented staff. So I am actually meeting with Denise Clavett on Wednesday to talk a little bit more about the finances. I'm not really sure I understand them completely, but hopefully, at the end of that period, I will. But I just put that out there as something for us to keep on the table as we go through the process.
Thank you.
I did see your, your question, Counselor Berman. Did you want me to, I can address it now if, if you would like that.
Sure. And the, the question I asked was about the fringe benefits, just so everybody knows the question, and why they're budgeted separately and not with specific departmental line items. So for example, a, a new position might be budgeted for their salary, but that also encourages fringe benefit costs that would not be seen as part of that department's budget, and therefore, may be less transparent for us or the public.
Yes. So when I started with the city of Saco, fringe benefits were actually budgeted with departmental budgets. However, it created significant bloat in the general ledger because for each department, you now had to add a fringe, a line for each fringe benefit. We do have about 10 fringe benefits, and we have 13 departments. So you're talking about 130 lines within the city general ledger. That creates significant complexity, not only for the budgeting process and trying to allocate those fringe benefits costs within departmental lines, but also for the ongoing biweekly payroll process to ensure accuracy in withholding amounts and remit of payments to our vendors. You did hear from Director Roy, a lot of the hard work that her and her team have done in reconciling those bills. It's very difficult if you've scattered the payment amounts across 130 accounts in the general ledger to then identify that you're actually remitting payment properly based on what's being withheld. So we simplified the fringe benefits lines. The other reason that we consolidated the fringe benefits lines to its own sort of dedicated department had to do with the fact that while departments do exercise a certain level of control in their headcount in terms of requesting headcount or offering, you know, perhaps to consolidate tasks or create efficiencies that minimize headcount increase, they do not have any control over the fringe benefits costs, right? So do you have a family? You know, health insurance is our most significant fringe benefit cost. There's a significant differential between if an employee chooses to accept health insurance, or if they're going to bring their family online. So because departments didn't really have control over how the amount of So, because departments didn't really have control over how the amount of funding that was going to be showing up in their departmental lines, we chose to, to merge it into its own department that would then receive focus and management and a partnership between the Finance Department and Human Resources. And we have found in that structure, an ability to get significant efficiencies in how we budget those line items and ensuring that we're really looking at what we actually spend on an annual basis and not overtaxing the taxpayers for theoretical fringe benefits amounts. Your second question was about new headcount. So, we do account for the fringe benefits costs related to new headcount. So, if you look at the fringe benefits department budget, you'll see about fifty-five thousand dollars in administrative changes in that column. All of that is related to the headcount increases that were approved as part of the city administrators' budget. And there were a couple in the fire department as well as the labor position. The part-time IT helped us technician. We don't budget fringe benefits costs for part-time headcount simply because although they are offered a prorated benefits package, typically, part-time employees don't accept it because the cost is significant.
But, for example, if a new position was to be added as part of the budget process, we would see a line for that department, and then we would also see a line to change for the fringe benefit department to account for the extra costs?
Yes. So, if you look at the administrators' changes column in the budget book in the fringe benefits department, you'll see additional increases. Those all tie back to approved headcount increases. And we could provide some additional information about what an incremental headcount costs the city in terms of forecasted fringe benefits, if that's something you're interested in.
No, that's okay. But, 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 for example, if at some point during the year, a department comes back for a special budget request for increased headcount, you know, when you do a budget adjustment, we would see two lines, one for the salary for the person and another for fringe benefit change.
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Hatch.
Just one final comment. I made it to you, and I made it to, to City Administrator Keanrath, but I'm going to make it publicly. This is my first deep dive into a budget process, I'm two weeks into it. I can see why you won an award for the budget book. It is pretty well laid out. Dig a little, but you can find things. And you've been very helpful to me in finding things that I couldn't locate. So, I just wanted to comment on that for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. I have one more section to go over briefly, and that's the fee schedule. So, the full fee schedule is included in the revenue section of the budget book. There were minimal changes versus prior year. There were a couple of new fees for police finance in the clerk's office, largely to offset staff time and advertising costs for certain requests. There was an additional surcharge fee for the Water Resource Recovery Department. There were some fee adjustments from Parks and Rec based on cost increases and other analysis. And then, we did add, at the request of the Planning Department, escrow and cost recovery fees related to zoning amendments, contract zoning and contract zoning amendments, where the staff time involved with those can be significant. Are there any questions? And if you look through the fee schedule section, any of the changes that were made, the new fees that were added are sort of marked as crossed off, or, and the new fees are highlighted in yellow. Are there any questions on the fee schedule?
See no questions on the fee schedule.
Okay. That's all I had. Are there any additional questions?
I see no additional questions. Thank you very much.
That completes.
Excuse me. That completes budget presentations this evening, brings us to item 10. There is no new business this evening. Item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Keanrath.
Thank you. A, congratulations to the city's Mary Zwok team, who was the highest fundraising team for all the community and school team participants. So, thank you to all who participated this year, and we hope even more join for next year. And again, congratulations. Upcoming agenda preview, our next meeting on April 25th. We'll have additional budget presentations as well as Chapter 186 changes presentation. On May 2nd, we'll have our budget public hearing and an executive session as well. May 16th, there'll be a joint meeting with the planning board, and we'll also encompass a discussion on the contract zone process and ordinance. Additional dates in May will include other council-requested items, including discussion of a growth moratorium and ordinance. And we'll also be discussing proposed charter amendments. So, if you do have any charter amendments, please get them in to Tori or myself in the near future. Our June 14th primary is, is coming right up. Absentee ballots will be available on May 13th of this year, and the election will be on June 14th. You may request an absentee ballot up to three months before an election, and the last date of request or vote in-person absentee will be on June 9th of this year. And another reminder that all of our municipal elections are now being held at Thornton Academy for the future. Lastly, just to thank you to everyone for putting up with us with the Route 1 sewer upgrades being done. We are replacing some very aged infrastructure, and I'm happy to report that all of the detours worked out pretty well. So, thanks to our Public Works Department, WRRD, and of course, all of our citizens and visitors who put up with some, some minor traffic snafus over the past week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Keanrath? See no questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Johnston, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess. I, I had several things, but I seem to have lost the list. But I did want to just give a shout-out to the Parks and Rec staff that participated in the egg hunt, the annual egg hunt. It was kind of wet and whatnot, and a lot of time went into it. So, just thank you for doing it. My son was very pleased.
Any other council discussion and comment this evening? Okay, moving on. Is there a motion to enter executive session? We will not be handling item A, personnel matters. We will just be looking at item A, compensation of employees. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Don't all speak at once.
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Subsection 405.6, compensation of employees.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote to enter executive session. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to enter executive session at nine, eight P.M., and executive session will be downstairs in the conference room. Downstairs in the conference room.
Okay, we're back. I'll entertain a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any discussion? Roll call to exit executive session, Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Item fourteen, report from executive session, is there a report?
No report.
No report, thank you, Councilor Berman. At this time, item fifteen, motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call to adjourn, Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at ten nine P M., congratulations, have a good night everyone.